Good evening. Welcome to our December 18th regular meeting of the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. Mr. Gary Hanna, would you introduce our student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Green, good evening. This evening I have the pleasure of introducing Mr. Emmanuel Edwards. He was born November 4th, 2004, in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. He moved to Mississippi in June of 2017. Emmanuel has maintained a GPA of 3.5 or higher in his entire school career. Currently, he holds a 4.0 grade point average. He receives several awards such as Honor Roll, Student of the Month, and Good Citizenship. Emmanuel not only exceeds in academics but also extracurricular activities such as singing, gardening, and drawing. In Wisconsin, he was the lead singer for the children's choir and enjoyed gardening with his grandfather. He likes to draw and compete with the magic gathering competitions at Vans Comic Bookstore. Emmanuel also challenges himself and believes that he is destined to be a great part of his community. He plans to attend Cornell University in New York and major in information technology. Mr. Emmanuel Edwards.
You may please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I will introduce Reverend Charles LaShure. Is Reverend LaShure with us? Yes, sir. Please come up as I introduce you. Reverend LaShure's bio shares with us that he is a true story of how one can overcome obstacles. A native of Holly Springs, Mississippi, and the youngest of four children born to the late McKern and Eunice LaShure. He has beat the odds, low socioeconomic, divorced parents, but yet he used his faith and anyone who was willing to help him to work hard and receive an education as the means of getting ahead. He is convicted by the fact that a life has just as many mountaintop experiences as it does valley experiences. Reverend LaShure is currently the Assistant Principal at Provine High School. He is a proud member of many professional and social organizations such as Omega Sci-Fi, National Fraternity Incorporated, Powell Chapter Lodge 339, Who's Who Among Teachers, Who's Who Among Principals and Administrators, the National Teachers Association, and the Mississippi Educators Association. He is a proud parent of one son, Christian, and three daughters, Chelsea, Courtney, and Kalen. The LaShure family reside in Olive Branch, Mississippi. Please welcome Reverend Charles LaShure.
Thank you. School Board and Superintendent, just for a moment of your time, I just want to encourage you from the words of Jeremiah, the first chapter, verses 5 through 9. Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. Before you were born, I set you apart for my holy purpose. I appointed you to be a prophet to the nations. I, Jeremiah, said, Almighty Lord, I do not know how to speak; I am only a boy. But the Lord said to me, Don't say that you are only a boy. You will go wherever I send you; you will say whatever I command you to say. Don't be afraid of the people; I am with you, and I will rescue you, declares the Lord. Then the Lord stretched out his hand and touched my mouth. The Lord said unto me, Now I have put my words in your mouth. Just for a thought, I want to talk for you were made for this. I thought you were made for this. I know I only have two, three minutes. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that we were created for such a time as this. We were created for, just as Jeremiah, we were created because we were special in God's eyesight. From the children to the principals to the other administrators as well as the board members, we were made for a time like this. We're in a time where decisions must be made, where choices and decisions must be about our children and not about our personal agenda. We were made for this. We're special because, just like Jeremiah, when we were formed, when we were formed, before we were formed in our mother's womb, God knew us. Not only did God know us, just like Jeremiah, we're sanctified, we're set apart, as he stated in the verse, that he has set us apart for such a time as this. And we must know, as believers, as educators, we must know and believe in our children that anything is possible. We must challenge our children to be the best that they can be. As stated in my bio, there are many mountaintops experienced, but before we can get to the mountain, most times we have to go through the valley. So I challenge you to encourage your children that they're special, that they're set apart, and that they will be sent, just like Jeremiah. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend LaShure. Thank you. We appreciate you. Reverend, we have a gift for you, and if you'd stand to have your picture made with Board Member Frank Figures. We appreciate your remarks. Let the record show that we have a quorum. Six of our seven board members are present, and we have our seventh board member on the phone. Board members, you have before you the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have adopted the agenda. Item four, reading and approving the minutes. Board members, we have received and read the board meeting minutes from our November 28th special meeting and our December 4th regular board meeting. Do we have questions or comments or additions? Hearing none, board, do I hear a motion to approve both minutes, A and B, as listed?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve both minutes as stated and appear on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the minutes. Item five, public participation. Attorney Turner, I was going to say Attorney Dorian. We have none who signed up, but we do have one listed on our agenda, Ms. Michelle Henry of the P-16 Council. Ms. Henry, thank you so much.
Good evening, Dr. Green and School Board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The establishment of the P-16 councils is required by Mississippi Code 3718-5 Subsection 4 and Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards Process Standard 12, which reads, "There is an organized system to encourage community involvement, parental communication, and business partnerships in school district decision-making. A school district that has been designated as failing as defined by the State Board of Education shall establish a community-based pre-kindergarten through higher education P-16 council. And a district and/or a school designated as a D or F shall establish a community-based pre-kindergarten through higher education council." On November 29th, the Better Together Commission released the findings of Insight Education Group regarding its study of the district. The report is an opportunity for the entire city of Jackson to assist Dr. Green and the Jackson Public School District in transforming public education in Jackson. The report identified several areas of support and improvement to help offer a safe environment for students to learn and thrive. Our primary focus as the P-16 and as the state mandated council is to review the policies of the Jackson Public School District and offer suggestions of action to the school board based on the policy. Beginning in January, the P-16 Council will hold intimate meetings centered around policies focused on areas identified by our own surveys and the Better Together Commission report. Those areas are core instruction, discipline, and student truancy, especially among our exceptional education and struggling students and facilities. We will discuss the intention, understanding, and implementation of the policy. We will utilize the information gathered from JPS site councils and the JPS Title 1 office along with JPS policies to guide the conversation. That data will then be reviewed by the members of the P-16 Council to see how best to engage the community and the business partnerships of the district to assist in educating community on policy revisions and updates. We ask the community to support us in this effort when called upon. It is not impossible to transform the Jackson Public School District, but we must understand that some hard decisions will be made. And as we prepare for the next phase of work, let us remain focused on the goal, which is to ensure that all students who graduate from a JPS high school are ready for higher education, enlistment, entrepreneurship, or employment. I am Michelle Henry from the P-16 Council.
Thank you so much for sharing the information, Ms. Henry, and we certainly appreciate the work of the P-16 Council. Item six, Dr. Green, our superintendent's reports and announcements.
Good evening to board members, our president, Dr. Hairston, board members, our JPS administrators and staff, and to the community at large in attendance here at this meeting this afternoon. I want to start with just a reminder for those who don't know or haven't been paying attention, you've been grinding and doing the really hard work of educating your children or preparing your children for school or just living our lives, that we are approaching the winter break. Our winter break begins with a 60% day at all JPS schools this Friday, the 21st of December 2018. And so elementary schools will be dismissed at 12:00 PM, middle schools at 12:50 PM, and high schools at 1:30 PM. All JPS schools and offices will be closed this December 24th through January 4th, 2019, for winter break. Excuse me. Teachers and staff return to work on January 7th, and students will return on January 8th. We do have this information posted on our website, but we wanted to be clear or make sure that everyone knows as we have our 60% day on Friday, so that parents are making the appropriate arrangements for students to be picked up or otherwise, and that we're all preparing for a well-deserved break over the winter break, winter holidays. Next, want to say a little bit about our Pepsi JPS Holiday Basketball Tournament. The 2018 Pepsi JPS Holiday Basketball Tournament will be held December 26th through the 28th, 2018. Over 350 student athletes from 24 girls and boys teams will participate this year. They will play 30 or more games. It was really exciting, the tournament. Tournament games will be played at three JPS sites, and they are as follows: Forest Hills High School, Lanier High School, and the Murrah High School. The tournament semifinals and championship games will be held on December 28th and will be held on the campus of Jackson State University in the Lee E. Williams Athletics and Assembly Center. Admission is $10 per site per day. A multiple-site pass may be purchased for $20. For more information, please visit the Jackson Public Schools website at www.jackson.k12.mS.us. We're very excited to be hosting the tournament again, and we're excited to have our young people showing their talents and competing in the tournament. Should be a really amazing opportunity for all. The Murrah High School wins their mock trial competition. At this time, I'd like the students from the award-winning Murrah High School debate team to come forward. Don't be shocked. Come on forward. Ladies and gentlemen, the Magnolia Bar Association held their 2018 mock trial competition recently at the Hines County Courthouse. After preliminary rounds, Murrah High School and Callaway High School met in the final round. So there was no question that the title would come back to JPS since two JPS schools met in the final round. Murrah won the round and earned first place. Murrah's first-place team included Jordan Hall, Landon Murrin, Madison Huddleston, Morgan Love, Zamari Morris, and Abigail Showalter. The team's attorney-coaches are Murrah alums Kevin Bass and Raphael Green. The team is sponsored by teachers Jade Rawls and Micah Everson. Mock trial competitions are centered around staged civil and criminal cases in which student competitors portray attorneys and witnesses and are evaluated on their presentation, their argument, and understanding of courtroom procedure. Students must prepare to argue both sides of the case. The competitions are judged by members of the Magnolia Bar Association, including practicing attorneys and sitting judges. Please join me in a round of applause for the outstanding scholars. I'd also like to acknowledge the instructors, administrators, and parents, if you would please stand as well.
Congratulations. Yes, amen.
and act as though I did something to get them to where they are. Again, huge kudos to the Murrah Debate Team. Really, really proud of you and your accomplishment, and all of the adults who've been working with you. I've got two more brief presentations, and the first is in the way of a promise that we made to this board and to the community to bring back some additional, to bring some additional information and data regarding the Fast Forward program, which is a program of the Scientific Learning Company. So Ms. Bingam, our Executive Director of Exceptional Education Services, will present that information for the board and to the community.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will briefly do an overview of the data that was presented to the district-level team on December 6th. Fast Forward is a language and reading intervention program that is used with students with disabilities. It's a three-part model that addresses the root causes of language and reading difficulties. It addresses the foundational language and cognitive skills. It provides a deliberate practice and a guided reading support. On the next slide, you'll see, this is our implementation overview. We currently have 1,149 students enrolled in the program. It's offered at 28 schools, and out of the 28, 23 of the schools are elementary schools. Currently, we're at the approaching target range. Our completion rate is 61%, attendance is 69%, and participation is 78%. The target goals for the year will be completion rate 65%, attendance 80%, and participation 95%. Out of the students that are currently enrolled in the program, we've had 83 students who have completed the first product and post-test. On this slide, on this slide here, it shows you the 83 students. This is the data and the gains that they've made. They started out before using the program at the 17th percentile. Since using the program, which is 24 days of usage, the protocol is three days a week, so that's why it's 24 days that they've been using the program, they've gained 10%. So now they're at the 27th percentile. Also, their proficiency levels have changed as well. We've decreased the amount of students that are in the struggling range by 15%. Our champion school thus far is Van Winkle. They currently have 25 students that are enrolled in the program. Out of that 25, they have seven students that have made an average gain of one year and one month in 36 days of usage. Before, they were at the 28th percentile with their reading scores, and now they're at the 49th percentile. So thus far, Van Winkle is our champion school. The next, this is, that was just showing schools that use a reading assistant as well, but the key data point, it shows that our percentile scores have increased by 10 points in the 24 days of usage. And these initial gains, the analysis that was performed shows that it is providing a positive impact on achievement and proficiency for our most struggling students. What we have to take away from the data review is that we need to provide good implementation fidelity as well as consistent usage to show higher gains. Do you have any questions about the information that was presented? In your packet, you'll have a school-by-school breakdown of the target or their implementation goals.
Thank you, Ms. Bingam. I do have a question. Do students have access only to this during school hours?
No, they can use it at home as well.
Great. So would it be appropriate, I mean, could a student not enrolled in this program find benefit from this if they used it at home?
Yes. What we're doing, and that's one of our goals too, is to focus on meeting with our teachers that work with the students with disabilities and see which students would benefit, because we have it at these sites, which is unlimited. So we would like to see more students enrolled in the program.
Thank you.
I have a question, Dr. Hairston. What's, the gains are exciting to see. What's the strategy to make sure the gains stick beyond the intervention?
Well, what we plan on doing is to compare these, basically their fall star universal screener to the winter one that they'll be taking in January, and we'll see what the gains from there, and we'll be able to use that data to determine, okay, is it sticking, basically? And so we're going to compare the star scores to see if the information is sticking with the students.
And if it's not sticking, what will the strategies be to get them back to the levels they achieved under this intervention?
For each child's different, of course, but we might have to adjust the protocol. Right now, we're set up on a three-day-a-week protocol. If we, if it's a student and it's not working with that child, we might have to increase the protocol or altogether switch and use a different program with those students.
Okay. Thank you.
And this addresses students with disabilities in particular?
Yes, and it also addresses, we have some with our struggling students, our second graders that are currently tagged in CEIS, so we're working with second-grade students as well.
Great, great. That's good to know. Thank you. Other questions or comments, board members?
I'd like to just receive a copy of this extended PowerPoint that's here via email for you to get an electronic version of that document. This one's a little small.
Hard to read.
I have a bigger one if you want to, but do you want it electronically?
Electronically would be helpful.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your work and your team's work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bingam. And then lastly, we want to make sure that we, as a team, are providing to members of the board a snapshot of various aspects of our performance and aspects of students' experiences in our schools. And so tonight, I've asked Dr. Murray to share with us a little bit of information about student attendance to date. As we know, obviously, if students are not in our schools, there are opportunities to learn and to grow our near zilch. And so this is something that we're tracking and monitoring, we're working and thinking, obviously, about how we can continue to engage students and families in a way that increases student attendance and thereby student achievement. And so, Dr. Murray?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Green. Actually, Dr. Sargent will provide, or he'll tag-team with Ms. Thomas for this brief presentation. Dr. Sargent will outline the attendance data to this point, and Ms. Thomas will talk about, because we always, when we bring you data, we want to talk about the action plan, what are we doing? What is this data doing? It informs our work, so we want to continuously express that we are looking at the data and making informed decisions. So we have a brief presentation that they will present at this time. Good evening.
Good evening.
School Board, Dr. Green, very quickly, just want to talk you through a couple of attendance data points. Let's go to the next slide for me. The first couple of slides, we're going to talk about average daily attendance. And so average daily attendance provides us with the average number of enrolled students who attend school each day in Mississippi, excused and unexcused, the absences are captured in our average daily attendance. Now, average daily attendance primarily is used for funding, and so Ms. Miller looks at that data quite often. And some reports that she has to submit includes that information because the state came up with that to help with that MAEP formula. And so the next few slides that I have for you just will show you, we have monthly reporting periods in the district. We have nine reporting periods. So you've probably often heard me talk about month-one reporting, month-two reporting, and so every month, we have to transmit attendance data to the State Department. And part of that data is used to calculate average daily attendance within our schools and for the district. So the first slide that I have for you, go back one for me, talks about month-one attendance. Month-one attendance captures attendance data for the months of August and September. Month-one is the only month that has two months of data in it. The rest of the months are just one. And so that slide, you have for each area as well as for the district, our average daily attendance percentage for last year at this time for month-one as well as this year. And so you have that, month-one, again, is August and September. If you go to the next slide for me, that's month-two for October and also month-three, which is November. We're currently working on December. December will be transmitted to the state when we turn for the winter break. In the past, our goal for average daily attendance has been 95% for our district and our schools, and so you can see where we are with our average daily attendance thus far. When we talk about truancy, and the question's about average daily attendance, they all want to stop as we go or just finish and come back.
I just wanted to clarify that average daily attendance isn't actually the average number of enrolled students who attend a school each day, but don't they have to attend for at least 60% of the day to be counted? Is that correct?
They have to attend to be counted present, yes, sir. If they missed 63%, I think, actually, if they missed 63% of the day, then they're counted absent.
So it's not actually every student in our schools?
Right. And average daily attendance, also, not only does it capture those kids that are in attendance, but there's also another component that goes into captioning average daily attendance that's called days off role. So for example, when we have students that transfer from, we have kids that transfer throughout the year from school to school within our district, they also transfer from district to district. So when we enter those students into our system, if there are 23 days in a reporting period, if they transfer in the middle of a reporting period, if there are only 10 days left in that reporting period, then the receiving school, they get penalized for the days that the students were not with them, because those kids were not enrolled at that time. And the school that the kids left, they get penalized for the amount of time that's left. So if there are 23 days in the reporting period and a child leaves and there are 10 days left, then the receiving school is minorized. there are ten days left, then the receiving school is minus thirteen and the school that left is minus ten. Um, that's just the way that the, the state captures average daily attendance, again, because it's, it goes into a funding model. And so that's what our average daily attendance, uh, is useful.
Dr. Sargent, if you would, again, just state the, the percent of the day that students have to be in attendance in order to be counted present that day?
Sixty-three percent.
Yes.
And every child's is different. It's based on their schedule. So it's, it's not, a lot of parents will call us and ask us, well, what time would be the best time to withdraw my child? Well, it depends on their schedule. So our system calculates sixty-three percent depending on the number of, of instructional hours and the time of the day it is for when that child was dismissed from school. So there, there really isn't a magic number. We, we try to give a range, but every child's day and time is different.
How does this info communicated to our parents, the subtleties and the law and?
It's communicated at the schools when they have open houses and PTA meetings and those kind of things, anytime they have parent teacher conferences, anytime parents come up to within, to get dismissals. Uh, if the, uh, staff sees that they are being withdrawn early during the day, for example, if a kid comes typically past nine, ten o'clock, chances are pretty high that they may be counted absent even though they're present in school. If they leave as early as twelve, uh, they, they, chances are that they would be counted absent for that day because they've probably missed that, uh, sixty percent, sixty-three percent mark.
So, parents have a sense that to be counted present is important, but is there a connection to our funding? How, how absentees impact funding, our problem?
Let Ms. Miller talk about that.
About that, our parents, no, because as a former parent, I, I never, I never thought about that.
Yes, ma'am. It is absolutely directly tied to that because, um, as I presented, uh, in some of my documentation for tonight, um, the ADA number that is the base for M A E P utilizes month-two and three, those averages of those students who stay sixty-three percent of the day. So, um, and I'm sure we'll talk about it in my section about charters, but that's how, um, we will get our money based on those two months, just that sixty-three percent of the day. So it's critically important to us, not only that they come every day, but October, November are the key months for us as far as the funding model is concerned.
So we are pushing that. I mean, we're helping our parents understand that. It helps their child, but it helps the district.
And I can say too, I know I've been in schools, and I'm sure you have as well, where there are signs that will say, no dismissals after a certain point of time. And that's, um, why that is there, because they are encouraging parents, not only because the students are missing instructional time, but we need them in, in school.
It's, I would imagine, though, that's, this is something for us to continue to, to beef up and, and to be consistent across the board, um, with regard to how we communicate this information to parents and making sure that it's in language that, you know, parents can consume, you know? Talking about sixty-three percent of the day likely to the average parent is, like, what does that mean? Um, so I often hear, when I hear parents or even staff talking about, um, for secondary students, uh, talking about, um, um, students being released early or coming in late, they're often talking about the periods of school. And so to the extent that we can attach a period or some number of periods required for attendance and being counted in the day, that's, um, work for us to do. I think across the board, we've just got, which is part of the reason why we're talking about the attendance data here, uh, just work that we've got to do to, um, increase, um, understanding of the, the issues around attendance or the absenteeism and, um, articulating, um, more clearly and plainly for parents and for students, um, what all of this means for us.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Uh, that brings us to truancy. And so, uh, when we talk about truancy in the state of Mississippi, this comes from the Mississippi Compulsory Attendance Law. Uh, truancy deals with, uh, compliance. It deals with those kids who accumulate what the law calls unlawful absences, which means a student, uh, is absent from school and the parent has not provided, uh, an, an excuse for why the child is not there. And so, uh, the Mississippi Compulsory Attendance Law, uh, requires that, you know, parents are notified when their children have missed certain number of, of unexcused absences. And they, um, also require that, uh, the agency, State Department, is also notified, uh, when students miss, uh, a certain number of unexcused absences. So when we talk about truancy, uh, those students that accumulate five or more unexcused absence are considered truant. Uh, once students, um, accumulate twelve or more unexcused absence, then they're considered to be, uh, habitually truant. And so when we go to this slide, this shows the percentage of our students, uh, this year and this time last year, uh, that were considered truant within the district. And so, uh, we broke it out by division as well as by district. And so you can see for this year, which is in that first chart, um, red at the top of the page, in our elementary school, uh, we have eleven point four percent of our students that are enrolled, uh, that have five or more absences. One point seven percent of those students have accumulated twelve or more. In our middle schools, we have fourteen point four percent of those students that, uh, have accumulated five or more unexcused absences, three point seven that have accumulated twelve or more. In the high school, we have forty-four percent, forty-four point two percent that have accumulated five or more unexcused absences and fifteen point seven percent that have accumulated twelve or more. And then as a district, we have twenty-one point three percent that have accumulated five or more absences and six point one percent that have accumulated, uh, twelve or more. When we calculate the truancy, uh, one thing to keep in mind, suspensions do count as unexcused absences, but they are not counted as truancy. Uh, so these are strictly absences that are, that we don't have reasons for parents as to why students were not in school.
Um, are potential, um, transfer students in these numbers or not?
Transfer students.
So if a student is transferred out, would they be, and they've been gone for so many days, um, at what point is the district notified or are they, are they calculating?
They remain. If, if a student started school in August and they accumulate five unexcused absences in August and they transfer in October, they still, we still report those five unexcused absences for the time that they were with us. So that, that remains with the district even though the child has moved on to another school.
This data is for this year and last year. Do we have data for previous years or does, do they all reflect this down, upward trend in truancy?
I didn't pull the year three, but I can pull it for you. For the purpose of this report, I just pulled this year and last year. But yes, we have the data.
What our past history has looked like?
Yes.
Specific to the high schools, Dr. Sargent, that is a remarkable jump from last year to this year. Um, from roughly thirty-eight percent to sixty percent of our high schools are either truant or habitually truant. What do we attribute that incredible jump to?
I can speak to it from a numbers standpoint. Of course, I'm, I'm not in the schools to give you any, any specifics about why certain kids are not coming to the school. But I can say, uh, since the, we've had the corrective action plan, uh, one benefit to having that plan is that we have improved our data reporting. So the good news and the bad news is that we're doing a better job of capturing the attendance and making sure that we identify those kids that have absentee problems. And so because our schools are doing a better job of capturing the absences, uh, that's why you're saying a spike in the data. In years past, we haven't done as well as we're doing now, uh, with capturing that data.
And Dr. Sargent, just to further clarify on that, isn't there also an impact of how we count, um, uh, suspensions?
Yes. Suspensions are not counted in this data.
What?
Suspensions, they're not counted here.
Are not?
No, sir. Yes, suspensions are counted as unexcused absences, but they're not calculated in our truancy rate.
Got it.
If it was explained simply by better reporting, then I would expect that the numbers for elementary and middle school to go up as well, but in fact, they don't. But there's an extreme jump on the high school level. Maybe it's just that our high schools are doing a better job of reporting. But am I reading this right, that forty-four percent are truant, uh, this year and additional fifteen point seven percent are habitually truant? So that would be almost sixty percent of our students this year are truant or, or habitually truant?
That is correct.
That is a huge jump over the thirty-eight percent from last year at this time.
Yes, sir. What we did, we did change, we did change our process for capturing daily attendance within our high schools. So your observation would be correct. It is better in the high school. So that's, that's why we're getting better data. But when you receive the, the better data and you get honest data, then you can address the problems that you have.
That is helpful. I appreciate that honesty.
This seems like a crisis to me. Tell me if I'm overreacting to these numbers.
I'm with you.
But no, you're not overreacting to these numbers. And, you know, when you see these numbers, you start to better understand some of the reason why other numbers look as they do, academic performance, et cetera.
I mean, you've been in other school districts, DC, Detroit. Is this out of line? And even more importantly, what do we do about it?
I, I didn't know. Did y'all, oh, I'm sorry.
I've seen alarming numbers in other places. I've seen alarming numbers in other places, yes.
And as a second part of this is, it gets to the what will we do? Another point, uh, I think a point that's important is, uh, we went to electronic online, uh, attendance. We've been doing paper for years and that process also, um, you know, helped to clean up the data. So, again, uh, it is, we, we do have a plan in place to address these numbers. We are aware of this and it's one of the reasons, uh, that we wanted to add some of the early warning system information tonight so that you could see how we were addressing those issues.
Thank you, Dr. Murray.
Uh, there was a report that, um, that's available. The State Department has not released, and we're, we're going to get to chronic absenteeism in the next slide, um, but chronic, and well, I'll talk about it after this slide. So let's talk about chronic absenteeism. Uh, chronic, truancy only deals with unexcused absences. Uh, chronic absenteeism deals with all absences. So it, it captures unexcused absences, suspensions, as well as excused absences. So, uh, the reason why, uh, we monitor truancy because we're required by law, state law, to do reporting. Uh, correct, our corrective action plan, standard ten, deals directly with the, the Compulsory Attendance Law. When we get to chronic absenteeism, there's no law associated with this, there's no policies associated with this. This is the, this is the data set here that the schools are most concerned about, uh, because it deals with the amount of instructional time that students are missing in the classroom. So, uh, with the, the school-level teams that you hear about coming up in a few moments, uh, this is the data that they look at the most because this captures all attendance. Uh, a child is considered to be chronically absent over a school year if they've missed ten percent of the school year. So, uh, a student who starts the school, school year with us and finishes the school year would have done a hundred, or would have been expected to attend school a hundred and eighty days. So if a student misses ten percent of that school year, then they missed eighteen days. So a student that starts the school year with us, ends the school year with us, that have missed eighteen days of the school year would be considered to be chronically absent. So when our schools are reported for chronic absenteeism, uh, we receive the percentage of students that are considered chronically absent for that school. And so, uh, what we are doing in the, um, in this district, once we were made aware of how chronic absenteeism was calculated throughout the state, uh, we check our chronic absenteeism on a weekly basis because we don't, we can't afford to wait till the end of the year to find out what kids are already crossing that chronically absent line or those kids that are rapidly approaching it. So, next slide for me. Uh, what you have here, here again, by division for this year and this time last year are those percentages of students that are either chronically absent or at risk of becoming chronically absent by division. And so for the elementary division, you see we have eleven, eleven point eight percent of our students currently enrolled that, um, that are chronically absent or at risk of becoming chronically absent. At the middle school, thirteen point six. At the high school, thirty-four point one. And at the district, eighteen point five. Uh, there was a report that was released last year for the sixteen, seventeen school year by the State Department. It's available on the state's website. Uh, we also have it and can share it with you. But it reported throughout the state what the chronic absenteeism rates are throughout the state. Um, and our, whereas our district was not, we didn't have the best chronic absenteeism, we didn't have the worst either. So it kind of goes back to the question you asked earlier, um, do we see these kind of numbers in, in other states? Well, we, we see these numbers within our own state. So even though you're looking at the numbers for Jackson, uh, when, in sixteen, seventeen, when the first report was printed, we were not amongst the worst. And so, uh, so if you are alarmed at our numbers, you can imagine how some of the other districts are looking, whose numbers are either more alarming than ours. Uh, I, I imagine the seventeen, eighteen report will probably come out soon, probably in January, and we'll have our chronic absenteeism numbers. Uh, we've already projected them below in the seventeen, eighteen table that you have at the bottom based on our calculations. Uh, so ours should be very close to what the state will report, uh, when it's printed. But it's, the chronic absenteeism is not, not only reported by the district, but is also reported by school.
Same question here as last time. Um, is the jump at the high school simply due to better reporting?
From a data standpoint, yes, sir.
From a data standpoint.
You know, I can't stand to tell you that's the only reason for the jump, but from, from a, a numbers standpoint, for someone who watches the data and is monitoring the reporting, um, I can tell you we're doing a better job this year of reporting our absences that we have in the past. Yes, sir. Yes, uh, Dr. Murray, I was wanting me to share with, with chronic absenteeism, you can recover from it. Uh, truancy, you know, once a child reaches a five, a ten, a twelve day absence, is there, doesn't go away. Uh, as long as a student has not crossed that eighteenth absence, uh, their chronic absenteeism percentages can shrink, uh, because your numerator, when you're calculating this, is, is the number of days that a student has been absent. The denominator is the number of days a student has been enrolled in the district. Uh, so as long as a student, as long as the, the school recognizes that a kid's absences are climbing, if they can intervene early and stop the student from accumulating more absences, that bottom number is going to continue to grow as they come to school, which means that percentage is going to get smaller. So, um, chronic absenteeism can be monitored, monitored week to week, month to month. So in a school, uh, if I'm an area superintendent, I'm looking at my division and my area, then if, if I'm having conversations with school, what I want to see are those percentages to, to start getting smaller and smaller. If we see percentages growing and growing for children, that means, you know, either the interventions are not working that we have in place and we, we need to revisit our plans.
And so they, they can monitor that once a week or once a month? What did you say?
We monitor it weekly. Yes, ma'am. Now, the state, they, they run the report at the end of the year to capture all one hundred and eighty days, but we, we provide reports to our schools on a weekly basis to let them know by student, uh, what their chronic absentee percentage is. Um, so, and the, and the difference between the chronic absenteeism and the truancy is, uh, you can have a kid that's only been enrolled in Jackson for six days. Well, if they've, if they've missed four of the six days that they've been enrolled, they're chronically absent. And so that's why we can't wait till the end of the year. If we see a trend of a child not coming to school, you know, we, we want our schools to know about it immediately so that they can apply their appropriate interventions.
And as it pertains to chronic absenteeism, so, um, we as a system, obviously, we're capturing data and monitoring that and, and utilizing systems to, um, to flag for us earlier as issues seem to be building and growing. But if we, as a system, as an, as a matter of practice, sweat every absence, then you start to dig into and push against chronic absenteeism. If, if every absence is alarming to us and there's a conversation with families and there's, and there's, um, you know, work with a student to ensure that they're not manufacturing illnesses because they're feeling bullied or, or othered or not feeling a sense of belonging, all those kinds of things that start to, to increase, um, uh, absences, then you really start to push against chronic absenteeism. Folks who do a lot of, who research and, and spend a lot of time studying, um, and working with students in schools and, and, and groups around, uh, attendance and absenteeism, have, have started to, to unwind some of the mysticism that kind of bubbles up to chronic absenteeism. If, again, as we think about the things, every reason that is given for an absence and analyze that and, and dissect it and, and have follow-up conversations with families, you really do start to understand, okay, so there's some health issues here that we need to better understand and address. Okay, there's some bullying or whatever it might be, some other issues, social, emotional, learning issues that need to be addressed. Um, and it is child by child. Yes, we look at it system-wide, school-wide, classroom-wide, and grade-wide, that sort of thing, but it does start to come down to child by child. What's happening with this individual child and what's causing them to want to be to school and defy a sore throat or a sick belly or whatever it might be to get there versus, you know, another, um, and, and all the other issues, not to belittle any of that, um, all the other issues that actually do exist that make it difficult for children to get to school and families to send kids to schools.
Is this an opportunity for the district to work more closely with our, uh, Jackson Council of PTA and our P-16 Council to help us support our parents, to understand how crucial this is? Because here again, as a parent, you know, counting absentees and citing the time of day and, you know, you lose track. Cause here again, as a parent, you know, counting absentees and citing the time of day and, you know, you lose track of that. You've got four kids and this one's sick and that one, you know, it's just a lot going on and, and our parents need support. So I, I just hope we can find a way.
Absolutely. So yes, with those organizations and, and for several other organizations, again, as you start to peel back those layers and understand what are the reasons? Transportation, um, mental health, physical health, uh, uh, food, clothing, all of those other things that just become issues and impediments to daily attendance.
I appreciate having the data, are you, Moore?
Yes, and so the next-
Let's wrap up pretty quickly.
Yes, sir. The next slide here, um, basically gets to what Dr. Green was talking about. So research tells us that, you know, primarily there, there are three categories of students for reasons they're not coming to school. Some of our students, they cannot attend because of some barrier, which means, you know, they're illnesses, there's some housing instability. Some of the things Dr. Green just mentioned. Some situations where kids just don't come to school because of bullying, some kind of harassment or embarrassment situation. And then the last reason is just some kids who just don't come to school because they don't want to be there. Many kids we find in that particular situation are over age for grade. They may be 18 and still in the ninth grade. And so, um, we do have truancy officers throughout the district that go out and visit homes when we find students that have missed a large number of days. We have conversations with those parents, conversations with those students about why they're not in school. And we found kids that fit in all three categories. And so when we identify those students, uh, part of my team's responsibility, they bring it, they bring the data to me and we make their appropriate referrals based on what we find. And so, uh, the rest of the presentation, we're kind of talking about some of the other interventions we put in place when we, when we address those issues. And in the spirit of time, we'll just run through the next slides. But if Amanda Thomas is, uh, NTSS, uh, director, and she also leads a new program, early warning systems. And so just briefly, attendance-
MTSS stands for?
Multi-tiered, uh, systems of support. But, uh, again, just our, our processes, attendance behavior, course performance, mobility and retention. Those are the things that we look at. Uh, we identify, review, analyze, identify students that are at risk, become chronically absent, uh, use the data that's needed. And we diagnose, we intervene, and we monitor. And that's the process and we evaluate. We continue that process and that's how we improve. That's how we create a situation where a student is no longer, uh, a chronically absent student through this process. We have early warning, uh, teams in every school. We rolled that out, uh, back, uh, a few months ago and we started to process. We've hired additional staff to help monitor this. So we're doing a myriad of things. We've identified this as an issue and we're addressing it, uh, accordingly. And we have good data, that's key. We have good data so we can make informed decisions.
I know our schools who are, our SARS schools or our low performing have goals that they have to set to increase their app, attendance of their teachers and students. Do we have goals of how we're going to see, we hope to see different data next year?
Of course, we, we have, um, uh, every school has kind of a different, there, if there's a high school that has a 76% graduation rate and there's one with a 59, then of course they have different, uh, goals. But we, we have to apply the interventions differently at those places to make sure-
Us as a district?
Oh, yes, as a district, our goal is 95%. Our goal is 95%, uh, that's, that's the bar. And so we always want to, want to reach for 95%.
And I'll note that, that, that goal is not necessar, so, so yes, that's a, that's a goal that we've set. But as we move forward, as I think we've discussed before, with regard to some of the school, um, some of the goals that schools had set for their improvement, we want to make sure that the goals that we set are not just where we want to be, but they're, um, that we've done the work to, and to, uh, moderate our goals so that they're reasonable, right? If we're at a 90%, we're not. But if we're at, say, 92%, is it reasonable based on the kind of work that we've seen, based on research and all those things that go into moving, um, improving our attendance rate? Is it likely that we'll do that in another year if we haven't named that as a major, um, priority and put the kind of time and resourcing, um, and improvements in place? Uh, so that's work to do. I'll just say that, uh, I apologize, we had to kind of move through the, the presentation quickly. But I asked the team, and thank you so much to Dr. Sargent, uh, Dr. Murray, Mrs. Thomas for coming for, uh, and sharing this information. We, as we said, as a leadership team and looked at this, we were alarmed. And, and yes, we've had systems in place, but, you know, this mid-year look at our, well, right at the mid-year, look at our, um, attendance. You know, it, it caused us to kind of, you know, set off more alarms as well and wanted to obviously bring that to the board and make sure that we're, um, being as transparent as possible with the issues that exist, as well as some of the work that's going into addressing these. So you're absolutely right, this is alarming. And it aligns with some of the performance levels that we've seen. Thank you, team, really appreciate your work on this.
Uh, Dr. Murray, could I have a printed, big print copy?
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize, we, we'll make sure that, uh, we, with the notes, but we'll make sure in the future that you have a, a, a large copy. And we'll send it electronically.
And Ms. Bingham too.
Okay, okay, alright.
Thank you so much, this is very helpful.
And with that, um, I'll yield back to you, Dr. Har-
Thank you, uh, Dr. Green and, and your leadership team for providing this. Okay, information item. I am so happy and pleased to announce the members of our citizen bond oversight committee. I want to first thank, uh, the several, uh, citizens from across the district representing each ward who offered themselves up to be a part of this effort. And, uh, it was difficult, we had lots of folk who stepped up and we appreciate you. And even though you may not have been chosen, I certainly hope all of y'all listening, watching, uh, the, the, our bond oversight committee meetings are public and you are welcome to attend. I will only read the names and from each ward and we'll have a, um, announcement in, on the website that shares the bios of each of these. As I said, we had lots of good candidates, but the board really wanted to make sure that our team, uh, represented our district and brought people to the table who had skills related to this work, as well as skills in communicating, uh, back to our constituents in each of the wards. So without further ado, and I won't be able to take questions on this because we're going to have something printed for you in the, in the newspaper, in the board, in the, uh, JPS info. For Ward One, board member, who's Ward One?
I don't know who that is.
Uh, well, oh yeah, well, I just want people to know who you were. Akila Irving from Ward One. Ward Two is, uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, H. Ann C. Jones, Ann Jones. Uh, Ward Three is, uh, Mr. Figures, Sandra McCall, Ward Three. Uh, Ward Four is Andrea, Andrea's on the phone.
Ms. Hillier.
Ms. Hillier, Ms. Hillier. I do well, keep up with my ward. Ward Four, Ms. Hillier, is Erica Fell. Ward Five, Cass Welchman. Ward Six, uh, Ursula Hendri- It's, it's Andre Jones Ward, Ursula Hendricks. And Ward Seven, Robbie Luckett's Ward is Mitch McGuffey. So we thank all of these seven persons for your, uh, willingness to work with us. We want to, uh, recognize, uh, Dr. Lockett and, uh, Mr. McCracken, who will be our staff persons, uh, leading this effort. And we anticipate our first, uh, monthly meeting, that's correct, we're going to meet monthly, starting in January. I'm not sure if we've set a date yet, uh, Dr. Lockett, but we will contact each of the representatives individually, uh, the 15th. The 15th of January, so we'll be getting, reaching out to you. And, uh, our communications office will publish the bios of each of these. So thank you everyone so much for stepping up to support our JPS. Item Eight, consent agenda items finance. Ms. Miller, you have several items and board, uh, check your agenda to see if there are things you would like to pull and discuss separately.
Madam President, excuse me, I'd like to, um, pull for consideration, item eight F.
Eight F, pull from this current-
That's approval of the revised district maintenance budget?
Approval of revised district maintenance. Anything else we want to approve, in the interest of time, we might, could, uh, expedite the approval of some of these others. Board members, are we good? Do I, so do we need to have a motion on that to approve item?
No, I don't, I don't think so, not to pull. But I'll make a motion that we approve items A through E under the consent agenda for finance.
Thank you, Dr. Sivak has made a motion that we approve items A through E as presented on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Do I, uh, we need to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing non, we have approved items A through E. And Ms. Miller, would you, uh, present item F?
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you the approval of the revised district maintenance budget for fiscal year 18, 19, um, as, as submitted in your, uh, board material. Board members, just as a, um, background information, we went through the budget process. We, of course, were faced with a number of, uh, reductions overall from the budget. Primarily, there was a budget reduction of MAEP for $6.5 million. Uh, in addition, we had talked, um, about the charter school payment, the fact that we saw some increases there. Becau, but it was at that time, we, we, um, were certainly going through our bond referendum project. And so we had some discussion around, uh, seeing what the numbers, the actual numbers would be as they came in, um, from the M, uh, from the MDE regarding the charter school enrollment. We have seen some increases in, in charter school enrollment and we continue to see that, uh, increase. However, um, what we budgeted for this year was $2 million, um, in the hopes that that would be enough. I think, um, on several occasions, we talked about the fact through, through the process that, uh, I was uncertain about that number was not really clear. The number, um, actually does vary some, the, as, as Dr. Sargent talked about numerators and denominators. The MAEP, the allocation is not necessarily based on the average, um, the amount that we receive or that's used in the calculation of MAEP for, for, um, per pupil expenditure. So I think I provided, um, I think you all have received, and I know you've seen, uh, this spreadsheet before. Again, I apologize for the smallness, but I think Rosal sent it to you electronically. But during our budget process, what I've given you over the past, uh, year or so was a comparison of the, the real breakdown of how MAEP is calculated from, from line item to line item. The very first line item, of course, we've talked, of course, is about ADA. But the base student costs, um, used for the districts this year was $5,522.66. That is not the amount that, um, the charter school payment is based on.
What was that amount, excuse me?
$5,522.66. Now, that is the base for the calculation, which would be great if that was what we received. So of course, there is a local contribution amount of 27%, 27% that is taken out. And then any underfunding of MAEP. So that basically, when you, when you boil the numbers down, districts don't receive the $5,522 per student. They receive somewhere around $4,000 a student. But for charter school calculation, that is based on just the avalorum received by the district in the previous year. The concept behind the charter school law is that the school district where the child is housed resides, receives tax dollars for those students. And so that is the, uh, the dollar amount that MDE uses to take as that bottom line, bottom number on a per pupil expenditure. So as I looked at the per pupil allocation over the last several years, that has varied. So the double-edged sword of us receiving more avalorum, people are paying their taxes more, uh, businesses are moving into Jackson, homeowners are moving into Jackson. The double-edged sword to that is, we get more tax money, but the more tax money we receive, the more we send out per child when it goes to the charter school. So we saw this year, our avalorum collections increased, but so did our aval, our per pupil allocation. So last year, for example, we, uh, allocated $2,782.14 a child. We saw a great year in avalorm, uh, requests, I mean, avalorm collections last year. So, so the allocation is $2,922.39 per child compared to, um, probably our low back in 15, 16, it was about $2,600. So we receive more taxes, which is a great thing, but we also end up paying more per, per child that goes out to the charter schools. So, um, during the budget process, I think we talked about the challenges of how to balance this budget. We made a number of reductions, if you recall. We eliminated, uh, about 13 central office positions. We eliminated some teacher positions by attrition. We filled some positions with the vacant principalships to get to the six and a half, which included about the, the $2 million appropriation for the charter school payment. Again, the good side of being in a, a positive financial position is that our fund balance is increasing. Other, but for making some other probably drastic reductions in staffing. Because we have talked, uh, for a number of years, that about 75 to 78% of our district maintenance budget is, is people, is staffing. And so, um, at that time, the administration during the budget process recommended that we hold with the $2 million that was in the budget. But when we got the final numbers from MDE, come back to you with an option of how we would, um, accommodate any additional dollars. So the recommendation at this point is that we, um, take $2.1 million out of our fund balance to pay this, to pay this, um, this bill that's due January 16th. Uh, again, the good part about that is the unaudited fund balance did increase, uh, from last year to this year. It still leaves us, even as we, um, if this is approved, as we remove the $2.1 million from fund balance, it still leaves us at 12.38% of fund balance percentage, which is well over the required state, not where we want it to be. But we are meeting our goals as far as what the board policy is required and also state policies require. So, um, we're in a good position, unfortunately, but we're not because we are seeing the numbers increase. I have started, um, using these final numbers to do some projections for 19, 20. But of course, there is some expansion coming, as well as a new charter school that's coming on board. When this initially started, um, I think Dr. Luckett was asking about, um, the application process and how those charter schools projected their enrollment figures. When I started this process back in 2014, 2015, I would look back at the applications and kind of went with what they are projecting. Um, and what the charter schools projected as their enrollment, and they are off some. But, and y'all have heard me say this before, the charter school numbers are based on enrollment in August. And I think it should be very noted, as Dr. Luckett said, our numbers as, for funding are based on students who come 63% of the day in October and November. But charter school funds are based on numbers enrolled in August. Unfortunately, that is just not a benefit to the district. If you recall back during the ed bill days, rewrite days, I spent a lot of time with legislators and trying to get, uh, if there was an MAEP rewrite, that some of that equal out, that we all be held to the same standard, October, November, 63% of the day, and that'd be, you know, the fair thing to do. Of course, the MAEP rewrite did not happen, so that went away. What we are seeing though, are a number of students from other school districts that are now going to charters. I would anticipate that the voices now will join mine. That was a lone voice crying in the, in the wilderness. Because we are seeing some, um, metro area students who are going from their, um, high-performing districts to charters. They are also having to go through the same process. So they are receiving letters as we are. Unfortunately, our numbers are larger. I've talked about, I think through the budget process, wanting to make sure we audit this information, although there is not. There is an audit feature in the legislation that speaks to MDE's requirement to then shore the numbers up at the end of the year. So based on what they give us now, they have an obligation to compare those numbers to the end of the year. And if there are any funds that need to be returned to the district- the end of the year, and if there are any funds that need to be returned to the district, they should be done. But we have not received any to, to date. I think that we, we have a game plan going forward. Again, I have, this is a personal point for me to make sure that we track those. Dr. Murray and his team have assisted us this year in identifying in the enrollment system those students who we know have gone over to the charter schools. And I anticipate being able to at least have a conversation with charters to get that information back, to see, number one, if the students are still there, and if they are not where they are, and if they have returned to us where they are. Of course, the loophole is if the student leaves us in August, but comes back in December, they have missed account for us for the next year. Even if they come back in October and November, we still pay for them, because in August, they were at the charter. Then their allocation, if they remain, will help us in the next year. So there are some, there's some education, and I think we spent a lot of time during the bond referendum, talking about voters, about how charter schools are affecting us financially and fiscally. And I think that we can never stop talking about it. I think that it gives us that opportunity every time that I'm available in front of an audience, to talk about the impact, not only of why students should be in school, but why students should be here, and the how it affects us by students jumping back and forth. I was encouraged to hear that we are having, some students show some interest, some high school students show some interest in coming back to the district to participate in some of our programs, knowing that Smillo Collegiate, I believe, is expanding to the high schools for next year. But I continue to watch this number. Again, I've started the projection for nineteen twenty and beyond, because we do have one new charter that is starting K two, which is of concern for me, because those are students potentially that we will have never had in the district, that we now will end up paying for. So our early, our early childhood education programs have to be shored up, so that parents will feel that this is the option that they need, not the other. Of course, we're anticipating one of the charters closing for non-performance. Would love to get those students back. But I'm sure that as much as we're trying to get them back, the other charters are trying to keep them over there with them as well. But, so the proposed budget is to recommend to take the two point one million dollars from fund balance. It is, I will tell you, going through the bond process and talking with the underwriters, and, and that was a concern, we were very, very open with them about that, even with the insight group, we were very open about our enrollment challenges. But what set us apart is that this board was poised last year to make tough decisions based on enrollment. And I know as you are, you know, ready to make those decisions moving forward, if it happens that we will have to do those again, as we adjust for enrollment figures. So we will have to be very diligent, and I make, I say this all the time, make very courageous decisions about where we go for the future. I think that one of the questions was how do we engage in the future conversations? We just have to start and be very honest with where we are on enrollment and, and what our capacity is moving forward. So long, long way around, the administration is recommending that the, the budget be amended to include the two point one five five six hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents from fund balance to make the charter school payment, the total payment being four million one fifty-five six thirty-eight point five eight.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I want to particularly thank you for raising the awareness of the inequity in the funding formulas for charter schools in our public schools, and the inequity that Jackson Public School faces in particular due to that. And I do hope that our legislature will see fit to, to rectify that sooner rather than later. I do have a question about something that you mentioned about other school districts who are seeing their students come to charters. I just want to be clear, are there school districts in the metro area who are sending students or coming from their districts to charter schools in Jackson?
Yes.
And they have to pay out of their budgets to these charter schools?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Because the law says you can, and I had to explain this to one of my counterparts, you can transfer wherever you would like. The law protects those, those higher rated school districts from a charter coming into their district because without board approval. So students can transfer out, because one of the, one of the business managers said, but we're an A school district, it doesn't matter. He said, we didn't release the student, it doesn't matter. If the parent moves that child, and that child is reported on roll in August, that's where they have to pay. And so they're seeing the same challenges we are. I will tell you, I, I've spent a lot of time talking with the officials in Clarksdale. They have their first charter school, and they're struggling with that as well. So I think as charters, we see the expansion of charter schools in other parts of the state, I think that we will unfortunately, the way, but that will help us with our conversations with our legislators on the inequity in the funding model.
Excellent point, thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Miller regarding the revised maintenance budget?
I guess my questions are, first of all, thank you very much. That was an excellent report and, and very helpful in terms of understanding, and I remember the conversations around the charter enrollment. So we're, we are adding two point one million dollars. We're taking it from bond, fund balance this year. We know that there will be more charter school students next year than there are this year. One of the schools, Smillo Collegiate, I believe it is, you know, they're projected to add one hundred and fifteen students over the next several years, in addition to the new ones coming online. So we're essentially going to be starting next year's budgeting with two million dollars in additional expenses that we did not have this year.
Correct.
We also, looking at the enrollment numbers, are likely to experience a decrease in enrollment next year. Is that a fair assessment?
In my opinion, yes, it is.
So from a structural perspective, we've at least got to find two million dollars and maybe more?
Correct.
Okay. So I just, in terms of, when you talk about hard decisions, we as a board need to be ready for these types of discussions, because there are very few places to go to find that type of money.
And so when you talk about six and a half, six and a half million just straight from M A E P, that's based on not having fully funded and the, and the decrease in students, plus another two, I've actually projected two hundred and ninety-eight point seven five students going over to charter schools for next year, which will increase this payment about six hundred thousand more dollars, so around five million. So if you think about a thousand student loss, costs us six point five million, plus this additional two point seven, two point eight million, you're talking about a little bit over ten million dollars. And it is a, it is a big, it's a big lift. It's a big lift. But I think I've committed, and, and the administration is committed, to making sure this board is aware from day one of where we are. One of the positives of the bond issue is that, you know, that gives us some, some wiggle room on that side. But of course, it's, it's not ten, eleven million dollars.
Well, and it can't be used for operations.
Well, I'm saying it'll free up some district maintenance dollars that could have been for other.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I don't want to sound the alarm, but I do think that it is wise that, you know, this board and administration and the public realize that the decisions going forward are, are, are really not necessarily of our own choosing.
Yeah. I too just want to thank Ms. Miller for her attention to the detail and, and responsiveness and, and helping to educate all of us around some of these issues and, and some of the choices as they're shaping up for us as a district. And I also want to take this opportunity, because I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, to name that our district is launching into a major effort to rethink how we do schooling, to rethink who our students are and how we serve them, how we serve families. And so this report, while we've got to deal with the realities of what is, we also want to be very clear that we're very much so anticipating that we will be the competitor that we see others as. Right now, we see, you know, some of our, our friends serving in other spaces as quote unquote competitors, right? But as we move forward, we certainly are positioning ourselves to be the, the education service provider of choice. And so being much clearer about the kinds of things that our students will participate in and experience as they come to our schools, the, the safety and the condition of our buildings, and just all those things that have been at issue in the past, as we continue to address those things, and continue to sharpen our tools and provide the kind of wow experience that all of our students should have and deserve, we expect that we will start to stem the tide of folks seeking outside and other options, and start to look inward for how we can do that same work here and serve our babies over time.
Do we have more questions or comments from board members? If not, dear her motion to approve item F, the revised district maintenance budget for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing, hearing none, the motion is passed. And I would like to say, Ms. Miller, while you're here echoing what Dr. Green had said, but we mentioned the bond referendum. I know I've missed a meeting or so, I was on the phone. But I just want to give kudos to all the team who supported this work, when everybody told us we couldn't do it, we didn't have but eight weeks, we needed two years, and na, 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 na. Teamwork makes the dream work, and we helped, and our community stepped up and said, we love J P S, and we know the buildings need fixing, so we secured our monies, and that will greatly help in this regard. And I know much of your hard work went into that and the folk who support you. So thank you all.
Thank you all.
In addition to Dr. Luckett and Mr. McCracken.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okeydoke. Item nine, consent agenda items general. We have five different persons to present. Do board members have anything they'd like to, I guess we need to hear all of them? I guess because they're all different people. There's nothing anybody wants to pull, just do them individuals?
I can.
Okay. Some of them seem fairly straightforward, but others we might want to discuss.
Could we poll the families first? Ms. Marshall Thomas for an update. So item C?
Item C?
I'm, I'm good with the responses that were provided to the questions for the others that I raised.
Me too.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve items A and B, and items D and E of the consent agenda items general.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve items A, B, D, and E under consent agenda items general. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those items have been approved. Ms. Lakeisha Marshall Thomas, we just wanted to hear your loved voice. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The administration is recommending approval of, of the memorandum of understanding between Families First for Mississippi through the Family Resource Center of North Mississippi and the Jackson Public School District. The purpose of this service is to provide an online high school diploma program through F F M and F R C's Association with New Summit School, a special purpose school located in Jackson, Mississippi, which is licensed and accredited by the Mississippi Department of Education and by Advanced Ed. The addition, this additional option will help increase the graduation rate of seniors by providing a second chance to students who are at risk of dropping out, out or failing to graduate high school. This is an alternative pathway to graduation.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Board members, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Marshall Thomas, I know that we had a similar agreement with Families First, at least during the spring term last year. I don't, I don't know that we had one in the fall, but in the spring term. And I'm just wondering, the results of the graduation rates for those students involved in that program compared to the district overall?
Did you all receive the information that I sent?
I did. I saw it, but I don't know if the email came through clearly or not, because I couldn't.
I did bring, I brought.
It would be helpful to have some copies, because this is very important, and we want to get this right. And, and so that our audience listening knows, we are very intentional about getting data on what things work and have been assessed, rather than just approving things. So we appreciate everybody's work, but we do want to understand what the data says.
I've got mine on my computer.
You can see it, okay. Great, this helps.
Okay, so if we just look at, we have received our graduation rate for our previous cohort, which was twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Just to give you some information, the graduation rates, they lag one year. So the graduation rate that we're actually sharing now in this current year's data was actually for students who graduated in twenty seventeen, okay? So the students that graduated in twenty eighteen, this past May, we will, we will see this graduation rate with next year's data with twenty eighteen scores, twenty nineteen scores. So if you see here, report year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen highlighted in blue on your paper, at the top, it says, report year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Well, this is new graduation rate data that just came out, actually this month. And if you notice that we have an increase of our graduation rate of seventy-four percent. The current graduation rate that we're currently sharing is seventy-one percent. So what you'll see is a three, roughly a three point gain from seventy-one to seventy-four. So our graduation rate has increased from last year, three points. And you'll see some individual school data there.
And we can tie this to New Summit?
Well, not just New Summit, not just New Summit, because if you see that the second page of this handout are some things that we have in place to help our students meet graduation requirements. In addition to New Summit, there are other graduation options that students have. So we have other things in place also. So New Summit actually is our last option. This, New Summit is for students who not been able to meet any of these options listed on this page. So they, they, they don't meet any of the A C T options. They're not able to take the dual credit courses. They've not met the concordance tables requirements, any of those options. So when those students are at the last stage, then we go ahead and recommend those students to, to New Learning as a final result.
So the students who were enrolled in the cohort for New Summit this past spring were not eligible that spring for graduation or that summer for graduation?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we don't know what the graduation rate is from that cohort yet?
We do. So let's look here just for a second, because these students graduated in twenty eighteen. So if you notice, let's just look, look for example, let's look at Callaway High School, okay? Callaway High Schools, when we receive their graduation rate, you see it's listed here for twenty, for, for the class graduated twenty eighteen. You notice that in their senior class, they had twenty-nine students that were failing to meet graduation requirements after all other options were left over. Well, out of those twenty-nine students, six of those students actually were able to transfer into New Learning Resource online and get a diploma from New Summit High School. Twenty-three students were not.
So the twenty-three refers to the number of non-J P S graduates?
No, I'm sorry. They are non-graduates for J P S, not non-J P S graduates. These were non-graduates. Not non-J P S graduates.
So those, but those twenty-three were not enrolled in New Summit?
They were not.
So six were enrolled in New Summit from Callaway, and all six got diplomas?
And some of the twenty-three were enrolled, they just did not complete the requirements. Now, with New Summit, they have to complete four courses. And we have facilitators that are housed in each high school that work with the students. So also the students that, if they don't finish, they, they have an option to finish an extended learning during the summer. Some of those students did not attend the summer. Some of those students failed to complete the courses. And the courses are very rigorous. So it's not like just we, we just enroll the students in New Summit, and it's just free for all. They actually have to work. It is a very rigorous program.
So Dr. Luckett, is, am I also hearing a question, how many total were enrolled in New Summit, and, and how many finished in that total?
Yeah, that's right.
There were a total of one hundred and ninety-seven students eligible. All students were eligible to attend.
One hundred and ninety students.
So one thirty-five plus sixty-two were eligible to attend. So any student that in our district was eligible to attend. New Summit did not turn any students down.
So sixty-two of the hundred and ninety-seven who were eligible did end up graduating?
Actually graduated, yes. Actually graduated, yes.
But not 199, not all 197 were enrolled in New Summit?
That's correct.
How many were enrolled in New Summit?
And see, that, that, that particular number, uh, we don't have exactly how many were enrolled, how many did not, because we still have some that are currently still in, because they still have the option to finish and roll over. So, as long as they were under the MOU when they first went in, even if they didn't finish, they can finish with New Summit at their site. I understand, he just wants the number that were actually enrolled.
I wonder if we can't go back and, and at least, uh, start to get a number of those who, who began some coursework or something like that, um, versus those who finished?
Yes.
Maybe? Okay, we'll, we'll work up some numbers to get closer to kinda what, what you're asking for.
Uh, yeah, and I, I mean, I think the, the point is for us as a board to just know how effective this is. If we're gonna spend this money on this program, how effective is it to getting our students a diploma?
Yeah, well, one thing we do know, 62 students were able to graduate that normally would not have graduated with a diploma.
And, and for us, given that there's no cost, I mean, I would argue if there's one who finishes in this route, then, then it's at least worth us, you know...
That's good news, yeah.
And it's no cost.
Exactly.
Correct.
And in many ways, this is a last chance program, is that right? So, it's no cost, 62 students to get calculated in our graduation rate, which helps us with our overall assessment.
My last point on this is not just for New Summit, because we're, we're grateful for an, a last chance option for them, but for all of our students, even those who finish, you know, uh, all of their time at any of our high schools. The next question is, and so where do they go? How do they fare in the next step? Are they moving into a career, are they going on to college? If they go to college, how do they fare in college? So, that's continued work for us to track, uh, and we'll be bringing some, um, some, uh, uh, options to help us to better understand that further down the road, um, and gathering that data and using a national clearinghouse to, um, assess where we are.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
So, it's just another additional avenue as to all these other options you've listed as ways to get our students...
And so, if you look at the second chart on the first page, I actually gave some current data that we have. So, if you see, um, our current graduation class of 2019, right now, you see that says seniors ineligible based on state tests. These are our numbers. The numbers in parentheses were some students who just finished, uh, one of the options through dual enrollment at Hines. So, for example, you see Callaway had 19 students that just finished, uh, one, just completed one of those options, leaving this number on the outside that are ineligible right now for graduation. So, uh, throughout, between now, we're retesting, uh, the retest for MAP ended last Friday, so we'll get those results back in January, and then we'll continue to look at other options and put other things in place to help minimize this number. So, around April, we will begin looking at final, uh, recommendations. Uh, when we get the results back in January, we oftentimes go ahead and enroll students in New Summit and have them to, to start working on those classes. Like I said, there are four classes that they have to pass, and those classes are very rigorous. So, we, uh, we start those classes in January, if the students manage to, to meet another option, then those students just forego having to go through with the remaining courses, and they, they'll meet graduation requirements. If not, they're already on track to completing the four course requirements for, um, New Summit.
Thank you, and, and I do wanna clarify that, I do understand this is a, a free program for the district, so that's particular, particularly beneficial.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Okeydoke, do I hear a motion to approve item C, our agreement with Families First?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passed, thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Okeydoke, Sandra Lyons, item 10, approval of staff personnel matters.
Good evening. To Dr. Green, Dr. Harrison, members of the board, on behalf of the administration, I ask for the approval of staff personnel matters as listed in board material.
Thank you so much for sh- this information, Ms. Lyons, board members, do we have questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the staff personnel matters as presented by Ms. Lyons?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item is approved, 10A, thank you, Ms. Lyons. Board, do we have other business? Board, do we want to consider, well, all of us here, and our attorneys as well, do we wanna consider holding an executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we close the meeting to consider having an executive session.
Uh, do I hear?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the meeting to hear, to consider holding an executive session, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we will, uh, close the meeting, thank you all for joining us. So, we will consider going into executive session, have them, happy holidays, be safe, love on your family and friends, and we will see you in January, thank you for joining us.